With that, welcome everyone to tonight, August 26th, Board of Education meeting for the Coho City School District. And we can call the meeting to order at 6:03. If we could stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, that would be great.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And if we could get a room call, Peggy, please. Thank you.
Mrs. Giller?
Here.
Mr. Pesau?
Here.
Mr. Jackson?
Here.
Mrs. Dion?
Here.
Mrs. Carey?
Here.
Mr. Annaly?
Here.
And Mr. Nolan?
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. At this point, I'll turn it over to Dr. Spring. And as you can see on your screen, if you have questions, we've already gotten numerous amounts of comments and feedback that we will get to you. But as the meeting goes, if you have any, please use the boecomments@cohos.org email, and we will get to them as they come in.
Thank you, President Nolan. We have so far 145 attendees. So I'd like to thank all of our attendees for joining us this evening and for being with us. So we thank you. And as always, I thank our Board of Education for their service. So I don't know if you had a chance to look at our opening slide. There are two pictures there. So I'm going to ask Erin, who's hosting the presentation, to just go back to those slides, just so we can just take a look at some of the reopening plans and what it looks like. Okay, there we go. So right there, if you look on the picture to the left, you will see one of our classrooms at the high school. And in the front, there is a sign that says Room Notice. And they do have the capacity, according to social distance guidelines, which is six feet apart by person, not by desk, but by person at the front of every room, so that we know the capacity there. So I just wanted to let everybody know that. And then if you look to this beautiful classroom to the right, ready to greet all of her students, that's Mrs. Muscatella's classroom over at Van Skye. Isn't it beautiful? And you will notice the social distancing guidelines are being supported, are in place. They're six feet apart. And she can't wait to greet her students in the coming week. So thank you for going back. If now, we could go forward. Thank you. So I think everybody is aware that there was a press release in the Times Union yesterday calling that our CTA, our Coho Teachers Association, was part of a coalition of local school districts. In fact, we were one of 15 there, requesting a delay of in-person instruction to early October. And that was according to the press release. Did say early October in that article. So just so everybody can rest assured, CTA leadership and I met, and we discussed what are some of the pressing issues that we still need to address and that we need to refine. And some of those were regarding teacher assignments. We're close, but we're not completely there. But we should have all of our assignments set within the next few days. And a lot of that really is that we are accommodating a whole virtual model, the whole fully virtual model, and ensuring that we have staffing for that. So you'll hear more about that in a few more slides. Time for planning. We know that this is all new. And we believe that's really important for our teachers to have additional time for planning. And also, additional questions about procedures related to health and safety. So I am very happy to announce that we have reached an agreement. We have resolved these issues. We are moving forward with our current plan with slight changes, just very slight, to our school's schedule. And I am very confident in our current plan. So I'll be happy to talk about that in just a minute. Next slide. So Scott Charlon is our Teachers Association President, and he gave us a statement tonight that I'm very, very proud to read. "CTA would like to thank the district, Board of Education, and our community for recognizing the benefits of providing teachers additional time to effectively plan for the return of our students for in-person learning. This additional time will allow us to effectively deal with their academic and social, emotional needs and ensure that our students are returning to the safest environment possible." "Students will be returning to a very different environment than they are used to, and this time allows for us to be ready to address their needs. CTA is always willing to work together with our Board of Education and the district for the benefit of our students and families of Cohos." So on behalf of the school district, we thank the president of CTA, Scott Charlon, and all of our CTA members, as well as our CSCA members and CPA members, for all of their hard work and in working collaboratively towards our reopening. Next slide, next slide. So part of our new plan is to allow additional time for planning. So every year, school districts in New York State are allotted four superintendent conference days. So we had two already scheduled, September 3rd, September 8th. And now, we have converted our November 3rd election day, it was previously scheduled as a superintendent conference day. Because remember, we do have, we are polling sites at four out of five of our buildings. So that will be converted to a district-wide at-home learning day or virtual learning day. So the expectation on that day, as the same for our superintendent conference days, well, no, let me, please let me, let me change that. For the superintendent conference days, the expectation is that teachers report to their buildings. And we will have virtual presentations for teachers that they can access from their classrooms. And we will have a few in-person training sessions, when hands-on training is imperative, such as how to take temperatures. And some of our aides will be attending that training. So we have added September 9th and September 10th. So September 10th is usually that fourth superintendent day that we do kind of hold in the bank. And you may recall, last school year, June 15th and 16th, the last two days of school, we did use two superintendent conference days to allow teachers more time for wrapping up the school year. So this year, we're using all four upfront. We will still make the 180 days. I did tell our CTA president that we may have to have a virtual snow day this year, depending on what the weather holds. But we should be fine in meeting the 180-day requirement, because that is the threshold for state aid. And we do have contractual obligations. And our school calendar is based on 183 days. So September 3rd and 8th are packed solid with lots of activities for our teachers. We have Parent Square training. We have Class Link training. Peggy, would you like to talk a little bit about September 3rd and 8th?
Certainly, yes. So in addition to COVID-19, Parent Square, our teachers will be able to communicate directly with parents through Parent Square. Class Link training, which enables our students through Google Chrome to just click on icons to easily access the software that we use. Prioritizing social, emotional learning. Curriculum writing with prioritizing standards, also closing learning gaps and differentiation for success. So some of these trainings will also be continuing on the 9th and 10th. This also enables us to, we did have staff meeting and department meetings planned, but we'll also be able to now have grade-level alignment meetings, meetings with special education teachers as well.
Thank you. So the new superintendent conference day scheduled for the 9th and 10th will be devoted for teacher planning. Okay, so we want to make sure our teachers have enough time for planning for lots of variables this school year. So we're very happy to be able to provide that. Next slide, please. So given that, so what does this mean for our families? So in-person and fully virtual students in the fully virtual model, in elementary, in grades 1 through 5, September 11th, that is a Friday. Friday, September 11th, will be the very first day of in-person instruction. And for our kindergarten students, that will be September 16th, because we must still allow time for kindergarten screening. All right. Now, we will have Chromebook pickup and materials distribution. And we are planning that for between September 8th and 10th. And we will be in touch with our families. So that is for students in the fully virtual model. And you may recall that I have said we are only able to devote, or to provide one Chromebook per family. Our middle and high school students, so we are going with an in-person orientation for grades 9 and 10 for that Friday, September 11th. So we'll have half of the students in the morning, the other half in the afternoon. And the principals will be sending out more information regarding that. So the other grades on September 11th, grades 7, 8, 10, 11, 12, will be logging into their Schoology accounts. And they will be engaged in asynchronous virtual learning. So just so everybody understands the distinction, synchronous means live, you have a live teacher there, and you're meeting through, this year, it's going to be Zoom. We're excited about that. Or you have asynchronous, which means, well, we could say not live, but that is accurate. So teachers could be posting their syllabus. They could be posting maybe expectations for their course, or maybe some kind of pre-assignment that they would like to have students review before they start class on Monday. So Monday, September 14th, is a gold day. Remember, everyone at the secondary level is divided onto two teams. You're either on the gold team or the blue team, even if you are in the fully virtual model. So students, stay tuned. You will hear more of those details from your principal. And we will have Chromebook pickup, again, district-wide, between September 8th and 10th. Thank you. Next slide, please. So I also wanted to state that one of the questions that was discussed with CTA in my meeting this morning was that there were still a number of questions related to health and safety that faculty members had in the different buildings. So we are scheduling all the different elementary buildings, the three elementary buildings for Monday. We will have a faculty meeting that will be myself, Peggy O'Shea, our Assistant Superintendent, and also our school business official, Stacy Mackey, our Director of Special Programs, Erin Hill, as well as the building principal and their assistant principal. So we are planning Monday for elementary to meet with the staff, and secondary on Tuesday. So we will continue to, again, refine details and make sure that everyone's questions are answered, because we want everyone to feel confident when we begin in-person instruction. So there were a few updates from the governor and the New York State Education Department. Athletics, so schools can begin low-risk sports on September 21st. So the sports they have identified that we participate in, or that we offer, soccer and cross-country. So more information on that. But they're saying practices. And we do need a little clarification on what is allowed to occur on September 21st. But I believe practices, okay? That refers to practices. So another clarification we received is that SED has confirmed that social distancing is measured by six feet. Okay, I left out the number. By six feet between persons. Okay, that was a clarification, that they had the Facilities Department come out, and they said it was between desks. So the guidance from the New York State Department of Health says it is by between persons. Another law that was mentioned this week was the Capital Reserve Fund, that they may be used for COVID-related capital costs, but there are restrictions. So I just wanted to let everybody know that yes, we do have a Capital Reserve Fund. And all those funds are earmarked for the middle school roof and for the boiler at Harmony Hill. So we don't believe we'll have any extra costs there, but we are monitoring that. So thank you. Next slide, please. So we had a number of virtual panel discussions. Again, remember, there were some required by the governor. So we had a staff meeting. And I just want you to know that we had 166 attendees. And we also sent out the link to our staff through an email with a recording of the meeting. We had three parent meetings. This was in addition to the meeting that we had on July 29th. So August 18th, we had 65 attendees and 89 views from our website. And then the next one, you can see 3 o'clock was not a popular time slot. So we had 15 attendees with 11 views. And then the August 20th, at 9:00 a.m., had 38 attendees with 30 views from our website. We also have FAQs, which are posted on our website. And we encourage everybody to take a look at that, at those FAQs. We continue to update them. And also, we also answered questions from our CTA members. Next slide, please. "We're very excited to announce our Virtual Parent Academy. On September 1, we are featuring, okay, Director of Special Programs, Erin Hill and Rachel Marcel, who is our Harmony Hill Social Worker and District Administrative Intern, will be presenting on how to get off to a great start with social, emotional supports." I mean, think about it. Even the simple task of having family routines, that is something, because of the COVID closure, we haven't really been attentive to. So Rachel and Erin have lots of great ideas to help support our parents in getting our children off to a great start. And then on September 14th, navigating the district's technology platforms to support remote learning. So this would be for students and families who are participating in our fully virtual model, as well as all of our secondary students in the at-home learning day. So we'll have our Director of Technology Operations, Sylvie Joseph, as well as our Chief Information Officer, Katrina Hunt, and Jen San Giacomo, who is our Technology Integration Specialist, will be collaborating on key information for our parents on Google Classroom, on Schoology, on all those things, and Zoom. Thank you. So you can see here in the middle, we have Principal Tarlo from the high school, who is busy hanging up signs, okay? All COVID-related reminders at the entrance to the high school. You can also see at Van Skye, on the left side, there is a COVID reminder sign with an envelope with extra masks. So again, masks are available for our students and our staff. And then you can see at the high school in the lobby that there are more COVID-related posters. All right, additionally, I showed you that the high school has the occupancy sign. So you can see a science classroom on the left. Again, those are tables, and those are all placed adhering to the six-foot distance. And then again, we just love Mrs. Muscatella's classroom at Van Skye. And her classroom is all ready to greet her students. Next slide, please. PPE. So on the slide to the left, you can see a tiger, a Coho's Tiger mask. You can also see a handheld infrared thermometer and a container or package of masks. And then you see a bigger shipment of masks. That's from Van Skye. So you can see we have ordered a lot. We've ordered specifically for teachers' needs. That's, we have clear masks with the face is clear for our primary teachers, for speech teachers, any teacher who requested that one. We also have face shields. And there were some individual requests for other PPE that we were able to accommodate. So we're happy about that as well. Okay, hand sanitizer. What does this look like? So you can see a newly installed hand sanitizer on the left. Again, with the steps of how to protect yourself and proper respiratory hygiene, as well as handwashing hygiene. So when we say handwashing, not only do we mean with a sink and soap, we also mean with hand sanitizer. So again, we see another classroom here. This is a lucky elementary classroom with a sink. And this classroom also has hand sanitizer at the entrance. So not every classroom has a sink, but many do at the elementary level. So health and safety updates. So parents, we'll be sending you out a test run in the next week with your screening questionnaire through Parent Square. Just so I have reiterated that these are those health attestation questions. Again, it talks about symptoms. It talks about, have you traveled to an area where you must quarantine upon return? Have you been exposed to anyone who has either demonstrated COVID-related symptoms or who has tested positive? So if you have not signed up for Parent Square, again, we are urging you to please do that. Otherwise, we're going to have to track you down and try to get you to do it. So, but somehow, we'll find you to do that. So it's important. Thank you. So last Friday, all of the Capitol or the Albany County Superintendent had a virtual meeting with Dr. Elizabeth Wayland. So many of you may remember her and know her from TV. And she is the Director of the Albany County Department of Health. So we asked her a few questions. One of the questions, well, please, talk to us about mask breaks. Okay, because everybody is requiring students to wear masks at all times in the Capitol region. So Dr. Wayland says that she does not suggest mask breaks very often. Aside from being disruptive, and that was what she said, she said they're unsafe and masks can become contaminated. So she urged our parents and our students to help students become familiar with masks, feel comfortable with masks, make them a part of every day's routine. So I'm conveying that message. So the mask breaks, what will they look like? Well, they will occur outside. They will occur during lunch. And teachers will, and PE, and embed them in our everyday practice. But as far as having regular, on-schedule mask breaks, that is not being recommended by Dr. Wayland. So she also recommended that when we have lunch and when students take their masks off, that they could easily become contaminated. So she is also recommending that children have a brown paper bag available to put their mask in while they are eating. So part of our safety training for our students is how to put on your mask, how to wear your mask, and how to safely take off your mask. So these are things we will be reviewing with our students. So advice again from Dr. Wayland is that masks and six-foot social distancing is the only way to keep everyone safe at all times. So I will say we have three tools here in our arsenal, so to speak. We have wearing masks all the time, six-foot social distancing, and we have our health attestation and temperature taking. So those are the three most important tools for preventing any kind of COVID spread. So the superintendents, we also asked her one last question. And that one last question was, okay, should we open? Dr. Wayland, what is your recommendation? So she said, absolutely. She is sending her own children to school in the Capitol region. She's sending a child off to college and living in a dorm. So she definitely said, because of the low infection rate, yesterday, I think we all overjoyed when we saw the Times Union article of only, of zero positive cases, only to be a little disappointed today with 16 positive cases. But our five-day rolling average is still low, 4.3. And I'd like to remind everybody, back on March 16th and March 17th, we all remember those days. March 16th was the first day of our closure. Okay, and on that day, there were four positive cases. And then on the 17th, that jumped to 17 positive cases. So I just wanted to call that to everyone's attention. So student absences for symptoms that mirror COVID. So we've had a lot of questions about, well, my child has allergies, or my child usually, you know, sometimes gets nervous and has some stomach issues. So for those situations, we are, Dr. Wayland did recommend, along with Dr. Dechersey, our school medical director, for parents to take their children to their healthcare provider so that they can send in a note attesting to an underlying condition that presents some or all of these symptoms related to COVID. So we're just asking that that note is submitted to the school nurse as soon as possible. Thank you. So our virtual model. So these numbers are still fluctuating, but I'm happy to give you the update. So the numbers have dipped a little bit. So now we're at 424 district-wide. That represents 20% of our students who are planning for the fully virtual model, or 80% of our students who are planning to be in-person. So the numbers are still fluctuating. We still have students who are registering with us. And we are only accommodating those students if we have room. At this point, we aren't setting up or accommodating through setting up new sections. But we are allowing if there is room. We still have students who are changing their mind, going back and forth. That's why the numbers are still fluctuating. So at this time, we have nine sections planned. We have six that are already set with staffing assignments. So K2, we have one section each. And 3.5, we have two sections each. Next slide, please. So you may recall that we did administer a digital equity survey in the last two weeks. And we wanted to learn about our students' and families' home internet. So I think this is very positive. So 92% of our students have Spectrum Wi-Fi at home. So that's very encouraging. So we were thrilled to see those results with 1,000 respondents. The next slide, please. So now, this one's a little disappointing. So when we look at device access, 62% of those who responded have either a Chromebook, laptop, or PC at home. This does not account for families who have multiple children. We just know overall that 62% of our families have a Chromebook or laptop or PC. 32% don't have any device. And 6% have an iPad or tablet only. And while those can be a little more challenging with logging on to Google Classroom or Zoom, it's because students need to download the app. So that is just something we would have to work with our students and to make sure that they know how to do that first. And then they should be able to use. And then they should be able to use their iPad or their tablet. So now I'd like to turn it over to Stacy Mackey. So I'm going to give her my laptop.
Good evening. So a state aid update. Late last week, we received a communication from state aid uh, informing us that, uh, starting this summer, they began to approve general support, state aid payments, and BOCs and excess cost payments that were scheduled at 80% of the scheduled amounts. Uh, also, the Department of Budget, their updated financial plan includes uh, more than $8 billion in recurring aid reductions, uh, which obviously includes aid to school districts. And they do not plan, uh, to have a detailed plan to the legislator um, until late in the second quarter, uh, of 2021. They also advise that in the absence of any federal aid, unrestricted federal aid, that they will continue to withhold, uh, payments, uh, through, again, the second quarter of 2021. So the summer payments that were reduced, uh, for the Cahose City School District are, are excess cost aid, uh, which is the aid, uh, that we receive for, uh, towards our out-of-district, uh, placed children, uh, in special programs, the tuition. Uh, we had 100,000, um, that we did not receive that was planned for. Our pre-K grant, so again, these are going to be 1920 expenditures, 1920, uh, planned revenues. So our pre-K, our final payment, uh, was short $126,000. And our future-ready grant was short $12,000. So $238,000, uh, of our 1920, uh, funding has been held at this point. Now, we did have our auditors in. Uh, we have booked receivables. I would expect that we would be made whole for the pre-K, uh, grant and the, uh, future-ready. I'm hopeful, uh, not sure about the excess costs aid, however. So for the 2021 school year, uh, the potential revenue impact for us, if we were to see a 20% reduction for the full year. Now, I, I want to let you know, this is based off of our budgeted general fund state aid numbers. And this, now historically, uh, the governor had talked about, uh, foundation aid. And it's clear that it's not just foundation aid at this point. Um, so this would include all aid categories. That's the assumption. It would be about $4.8 million. And then the pre-K allocation for 2021 would be another 186,000. Now, we do have other grants. I don't expect that, uh, this would impact our title grants or our IDEA grants. So title grants is our Title I, Title II, Title IV. And IDAs for our special, uh, special programs, uh, they're called 611 and 6... And, uh, future-ready grants. And then we do, uh, usually receive, uh, smaller mini-grants throughout the year. So it's unknown what the impact might be, uh, for, for that funding category. So obviously, cash flow, uh, we're, we always monitor this. Uh, but we're going to need to keep a very close eye on cash flow. Obviously, a broad, a broad brush approach, uh, reducing all school districts in New York State at that 20% threshold is really a disproportionate impact for a school district such as Cahose, where more than 50% of our, almost 60% of our revenue is coming from state aid. Uh, we're dependent on that, on that funding. Uh, we were also last year identified as a, a school in fiscal stress. We worked really hard in 1920. We were, uh, under 3% in our fund balance. We worked really hard. I'm happy to report that we're closer to 4%, but, um, with these reductions, it's, uh, the burden is going to shift, obviously, uh, to our reserves. It's going to shift to our fund balance. And we're just not able to absorb $5 million, obviously. Uh, this also, uh, impacts our fiscal wellness and it hinders our long-range planning uh, and ultimately our budget goals. So what is the district plan? Uh, I immediately, as soon as we received a state aid announcement, uh, we implemented a spending freeze immediately. Uh, the only exclusion would be for health and safety, uh, items. Obviously, we've been holding vacant positions whenever feasible. We have been doing that all summer. We've been working with our pre-K, uh, provider to renegotiate the contract. Um, we have scheduled a meeting with our bargaining units. And, uh, we're working to revisit our spending plan to identify reductions. Uh, we've already contacted BOCs to see, because we have committed to services, if we're able to, uh, make adjustments to our commitment. And then, uh, BOCs and, uh, the superintendents, um, are leading an advocacy effort, uh, as well. And obviously, we'll reach out to our local, um, government officials. And any questions related to the state aid reductions so far? Okay, thank you.
Stacy?
Yep.
Just how, how firm are any of these numbers?
Mark, my recommendation is going to be, we're going to take this on a quarterly basis. So they're, they're pretty firm right now because they've been withholding the 20% thus far. I don't know if that'll continue throughout the year. Um, so my recommendation is going to, is going to basically make reductions on a quarterly basis and have that planned out. I'd hate to make reductions that aren't necessary.
Hey, this is, this is an outrage because it so disproportionately affects districts like more heavily count on aid and those wealthier school districts that do not count on aid take anywhere near the hit. So your, your, your districts of, of greater need will, will have even less to work with. This is just outrageous.
Yeah, it's absolutely, Mark. It's, uh, it's impacting the city school districts, uh, really bad. Uh, it's going to activity, I think they have a $30 million deficit. So, yeah, absolutely.
And I, I understand that this is a, this is a very bad time. It is, uh, the, the districts with the higher needs will, will, will have less. I don't, I don't know how we swallow this.
Agreed.
Stacy, when is the end of the next, uh, quarter? When should we expect an update for, from that?
Um, I would love to say November, December timeframe. Um, I will continue to, uh, work with Questar Three State Aid Planning to see if there's updates, as well as we have other, uh, groups that we work with, the superintendent's group and the business officials group, as well as weekly calls with BOCs. So I'll keep you updated as soon as we receive information. But I wouldn't be surprised if we don't have an update until November, December timeframe.
And what is our position with, um, the Boys and Girls Club as far as numbers? Or is our contract firm on the number of students that we have in that program? Or is it just a contract based on, you know, is it class size? Is, I'm, I'm not sure how that contract works, if you're familiar with it. I mean, it appears we've already lost funding in the UPK area and are looking to be losing more funding from the UPK area. And, um, you know, for us to be in a position to have to cut things K-12, um, not that, you know, UPK is not essential because it absolutely is. But, uh, my fear is that we get into the middle of the school year and then have to start cutting, uh, uh, school age.
So had we known that pre-K was an area that they were going to make 1920, we would have opened up the contract earlier. Uh, but we have asked them to reduce, uh, to plan to reduce the contract by 20%. At our last meeting, uh, they had a scenario at 12 and 14%. We asked them to go back to the drawing board. So we have asked them.
This is, this is Peggy. Um, we also have, uh, Jaclyn and I and Mary Haley, a phone conversation, uh, scheduled with, uh, state ed representative tomorrow to talk about some of the different scenarios. Um, we're, we're funded by child, but there is, um, some wiggle room because we have full day, uh, full day program. But we get funded in one classroom for half-day numbers. So we, um, we have been talking with UPK about reducing, uh, one four-year-old class. Right now, we, our, our registration is low, so that would not impact families. Um, but that would, that would allow them to reduce the budget. Um, we're asking questions such as, what is the impact with grant funding if we reduce the number of days? Um, and they're looking throughout all, all areas. And after our, our state ed call tomorrow, we have another scheduled meeting on Friday and we'll be able to give you an update.
So Peg, what is the expectation for, for these families? Because I know, you know, we're having conversations about mostly school-age programs. But, you know, there's been a lot of talks with us, like, I haven't heard anything. I don't know if my...
Yeah, so, so, and we just, we just got four. Um, also, uh, the plan is for us to start September 16th, the same date that kindergarten starts. Um, screening will take place a couple of days earlier, um, along with kindergarten screening. We, um, we currently have three three-year-old programs. And we're running all of our four-year-old programs except one. But as I mentioned, that will not impact families. Um, so right now, all of our programs, um, all of our families who have, who have registered and who have, uh, received acceptance, uh, will be able to send their children on September 16th. Um, the, the day, the day scenarios we're looking at, you know, and I'm not sure if this is the conversation with state ed, is are we, um, are we able to end, uh, a little bit earlier, um, at things like that? Um, they're looking at, uh, you know, vacation time with staff, things like that. Things that are, that are not going to impact families right now. So the plan is September 16th, uh, for those, for those families. And we'll get that information out very soon.
Okay, Peggy, um, this is Sue. Um, I asked today when UPK would start, and I was told September 14th. Um, that was in an email to the board. So is it the 14th for UPK or the 16th?
So, uh, Peggy, um, I don't know if we've made a, a determination, but in my conversation today with the, with Jacqueline, she'd say September 14th. Or we'll clarify that.
Yeah, I, um, what, I can, when I texted, Jaclyn and I have been, been texting and, uh, because they also have to screen their, their children as well. And so we're going to have it, uh, you, mirror kindergarten. That way, the days of screening can count and they'll be being screened on, um, the 14th and 15th.
Thank you.
Okay, um, thanks Peg. I also have another question. This is Sue. Um, I just fear that, um, I mean, I hope that what happens with the UPK isn't what happened with the community center. I mean, these parents aren't just going to show up one day, one Friday in November and be told that, that UPK has ended, right? I mean, I'm kind of trying to cut to the chase here and clarify for some of these parents who are counting on UPK.
Right. Um, do you have any...
I really think we, we, I mean, this can't happen again.
So Sue, we are reducing, um, by 20%. That was the advisement. Um, and we are eliminating one four-year-old classroom. So again, we're being preemptive and I am proactive. So we're, we're hoping that that's enough. Stacy, did you want to make a comment?
Yes, when we meet with them, so we, we review their line item budget.
Okay.
Um, the whole group. And, um, they have, um, they also have to provide their financial statements annually to me.
So where are the four, okay, so we added a four-year-old class to Harmony Hill, correct?
Yes.
And so what is the configuration of the four-year-old classes right now?
So the, the, for, the class that has been reduced, will be reduced is at Abram Lansing. Um, the two four-year-old classes at Harmony, um, are, are filled with students who, uh, will then be attending kindergarten in Harmony Hill. So we were able, uh, Abram Lansing was not at capacity. The, there are three classrooms, almost to capacity. So it's a, a classroom at Abram Lansing, um, which I, which will not impact parents. It could impact parents who want to register in the future. Uh, but right now, we're able to accommodate all the families that have registered. And our three-year-old configuration is still the same. One at Van Skye, one at Harmony, and one at Abram Lansing.
So you project that parents would, would know, yes, UPK for three-year-olds and/or four-year-olds is continuing? I mean, I, I, I'm just trying to get some answers. I, I feel like it's kind of unclear. I understand the financial part of it is unclear. I, I get all that, believe me. Um, nobody saw this coming, but I, I, there are parents, you know, there, we've got questions today about the UPK program.
So we, um, we're, we're starting, four-year-olds will be starting on the 16th. Um, screening will take place on the 14th and 15th. And, um, to get to the 20%, I know Stacy told you we're at 14%. We are looking at other, other areas. We haven't finalized our discussion of all of those areas. Um, but they, they will, so some materials and supplies, some other types of, uh, items, but they will not impact the, um, the running of those classrooms. And we're getting more clarification from state ed as to, could we potentially, uh, end, uh, you know, a, a week or so earlier in the school year for UPK? We're asking questions like that, but we're starting on the 16th and, and planning to, to, um, ahead for the year. And like Stacy said, we, we, um, a, as part of the MOA, which we're going to, um, have on the next board agenda, actually, the contract, it does discuss, um, them sharing the financials with Stacy. Uh, and so we have already looked at it. We've looked together at two different budget scenarios and we're continuing to do so. But, um, so it's a, it's a very, uh, it's a very open process and we're, and we're working together on solutions.
Right, and I think also they had, uh, I don't think they had to, even though we're reducing a classroom, didn't they, um, have like a promotion? So it was really a no-fill situation, uh, rather than a layoff situation for them?
Uh, yeah, so it's, so they're not having to lay off staff. It is, uh, it's no-fill.
Right.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you. So I have one other question related to, uh, UPK and kindergarten. I'm just wondering what screening looks like? Is this a, a one student, one parent coming into the building? Is there a designated area? We don't, we don't keep a sign to screening. Like, how is that going to work?
Yeah, so it's socially-distanced kindergarten screening. The, the teachers are meeting the parents outside. Uh, the principals have, uh, will have, um, the, you know, pop-up tents to set up outside so that they'll be able to talk with the parents, have the conversation. Um, then the student will be brought inside to be screened. But, but if, uh, there's a preference, the student can stay outside to be, to be screened. But it is, uh, independent schedules. And I know some parents were concerned about not being able to go in. So that's why they will be meeting the teacher. They'll be seeing pictures of, you know, of the classroom. And then, then the student will be brought in and be screened outside.
So is it reasonable to, a reasonable expectation to say some communication is going out to these families in...
So, yep, so the, the parents, uh, so I know that there was a letter that went out about when screening would be. I know the dates have changed a little bit. Uh, so yes, letters will be going out from the principals with the, with the screening, with the screening times and, and describing the process very soon.
And so just to recap for me...
And so just to recap for me, um, the UPK program is still completely grant-funded, is that correct? Like, we couldn't say we need the money elsewhere and use it elsewhere, like that, right? Like, there's no way that that happens?
Right, it's, it's completely grant-funded, and we get funded based on the number of students and the number of days. That's why we're having the conversation with State Ed about is there any leeway with those number of days? I know we heard something about a waiver, but that's our conversation tomorrow, right? We cannot use that, um, that has to be used to support UPK.
From that perspective, it's a, a little bit reassuring that unless there are additional cuts on the State Ed side, that this UPK program will definitely continue.
And I mean, they did, uh, we don't know when, but we have heard that we'll get the, the funding from the spring, Stacy, but we're not sure whenever that will be, so.
Fingers crossed.
So this is Nadia. I have a question about the impact of the 20% on, um, our ability to provide devices. I know that we are already a little short. Can we get an update on how many devices we need in order to, to be effective in a virtual environment?
Are you talking, Nadia, about a fully virtual or a virtual model?
Well, I guess both. I mean, so on September 14th, how many kids who have selected virtual will have a district-provided device? And if we have to flip on September 15th, how many kids will have a device?
So I have numbers here from elementary. So right now, we have 24 students who do not have a device from Lansing, 17, um, from Harmony, uh, and nine from Van Skye who are looking for a district-provided, uh, device. There are some of those families who have multiple children. So that we'll, we'll have to figure something out because again, we're only providing one, uh, per family. And the, the reason we're doing that is because of our low inventory, and that will impact the number of devices we have in our buildings to be able, to be able to utilize, you know, learning platforms. For example, Into Reading has a learning platform. Many of our, our programs and, and our, our books and, um, have learning platforms, um, uh, that we need to have in our buildings. So, so, so that's a challenge. Um, uh, it will be a challenge at our secondary level as well because even students who are just in the in-person model, remember every other day, they are in the at-home learning day, um, and, uh, many of them won't have a device. So it is something that we are continuing to work on, and I, I do believe that the Chromebooks will be delivered in October, which, um, yep, so we are expecting the, the bulk of the shipment to arrive in October, but, um, it continues to be a challenge, Nadia. Um, we are seeking donations to give directly to our families, um, from local businesses, um, and we're continuing to work on that.
Could I just add something to that? So that the numbers, uh, Dr. Spring, don't take into account the families who did not respond to the tech survey. So what we're doing is we're, uh, cross-referencing the, our, our virtual students right now with parents who did not complete the survey. And so for example, uh, at the start of today, there are about 20 virtual families at Lansing who had not yet completed the survey. So, uh, phone calls were made today, uh, by McKenzie to Lansing families, Harmony families, and Van Skye families. So, uh, those, those numbers of who will need them, um, will change based on that information. We're updating the spreadsheet, and then, um, then we move on to the families who didn't respond to the surveys at the middle and high school who are going virtual. So that's our, that's our first step. So the families who did respond, the, the numbers, uh, were not as high as we, we thought. So we will give you the, we can give you that update by Friday after all the families are contacted.
Thanks. I, the chart said a thousand plus respondents. Is that a thousand plus students accounted for or a thousand plus households?
We asked them to complete the survey for each child in their household. And so for example, if, if they had one device and three children, then they would have responded one for one of their children and no devices for the other two. Um, I'm not quite sure in terms of the survey breakdown, how, um, how that was reported, um.
But if N is a thousand, then that's not.
That's, uh, that's a thou, that's a thousand, that's a thousand responses, um, out of, uh, well, pre-K did not get a survey, so out of our students. So yeah, so that's why for calling with virtual. And then we'll just add another parent square reminder. We thought the quickest way to get the information for the virtual right now was through the calls.
Other questions from board members?
So I have a couple of questions not, um, that doesn't have any UPK or kindergarten or budget. So mine is more on what the virtual learning experience for students. What is an in-person, and I know that I missed the last meeting, so if you covered this, I do apologize. What is in-person versus 100% virtual? Do they actually have a, a teacher that, that is communicating with them on a daily basis throughout the school day? And then I also was wondering if there are communications that we're preparing right now for the 100% virtual students? Like, what does that look like? Not only for our kids who are going to be in-person, you know, what does a transition look like? But for our 100% virtual, what is the first day of class look like? What is the expectation? What are they supposed to be doing?
Right. So, um, so we did miss you at our last meeting, Margaret, um, and we did talk about this, uh, and we continue to refine the plan. So I'll just give you, uh, an overview of the framework, and Peggy, please feel free to chime in. So elementary, we have nine sections, and those students will be, uh, participating, um, logging on, on Zoom from nine o'clock in the morning until quarter of three. There's an hour off for lunch. So we divided the day, uh, morning is, is ELA, and I, I believe that was two hours for an ELA reading, writing. And then the afternoon is a mixture of, of math, of science, of, of social studies, uh, social emotional learning. Um, and then we will have our specials, which will be asynchronous. So those will be, uh, projects that will be, um, sent to students and, and followed up on, uh, through, uh, through that way. So, so that is more or less that, that model. So it's live. It's, it's mostly live. And then at the secondary level, students have schedules. They have period-by-period schedules. And we were able to, at the high school and middle school, have completely virtual sections. So for example, the teach, they'll, they are also going to be on a blue gold day, uh, rotation, alternating day. So they're going to have their live day with their teacher. And then the next day will be, you know, more or less similar to the other students. It will be their at-home learning day, which will be, you know, more or less, uh, you could have a, a pre-recorded, you know, activity, lesson. It could be lecture notes. It could be something that the teacher assigns that they're working on from the previous day. So, so that's what the second day looks like. So we, we were excited. We were able to get that going, um, for secondary students.
Good. Just, um, so we have gotten some questions from virtual, from parents of, uh, elementary students about the virtual model. So during that live day, it won't be that the child is, um, just, you know, sitting in, in front of the computer the entire time. There'll be whole group, uh, Zoom sessions, and then students will be, uh, able to be broken up into, into groups to work with each other through Zoom breakout rooms. Then there'll be, um, opportunities provided for independent practice. And then the teacher will be able to, uh, work one-on-one with students at different, at different times. There'll also be movement breaks throughout, um, so, so the, and the, um, virtual teachers. So in addition to our staff, um, uh, development meetings that we discussed, we'll be, uh, meeting with virtual teachers as a group and talking about best practices, doing further, um, Zoom trainings because Zoom has a lot of features such as polling and other interactive features. And we'll also have a professional learning community where our, uh, virtual teachers continue to meet and share, um, share best practices.
So, uh, Margaret, also at, at the high school, in some of those courses where we don't have a fully virtual section, we've split the class in half, okay? And the teacher may have half in-person students on one day, and then the next day, the teacher would have, um, his or her virtual students. So we were able to accommodate our students', um, schedule, so, so it was good.
So everything that you guys just said is, is that, when does that go out? When does that information go? Cause, cause I feel like the people that have even chosen the virtual, and these are conversations that I've had as today, they, they don't know what that means. They don't know, you know, and it's, I'm, it's great that you're giving us this presentation, and I can certainly communicate that, but they don't know what the expectation is of, going to be of them as a parent and of their children.
So I know principals are, are getting their materials to send out now, and they're, they're completing them. Um, and, uh, we'll make sure that further guidance goes out for.
If I could also say so after parents initially signed up, and I know there were some questions then, we did send out the information with the, with the schedule and what the, you know, what the day would look like, all content areas, lunch from 11:30 to 12:30. So that was sent to parents. We definitely can send that again. And like Dr. Spring said, that, um, parents are, more communication is also going out as well as we'll be working, um, that day for, uh, the first day for some, um, notifications to go out directly from the teacher.
Peggy, uh, may I ask what, um, just for clarification, could you explain what the, the definition of social emotional learning is?
Well, so, so social emotional learning is, uh, helping students, uh, to build resiliency, you know, to cope with difficulties. Um, it incorporates, um, character traits. You know, it's, uh, helping them adjust to their environment. So it encompasses many, um, many areas. So for example, second step at the elementary, it's our social emotional curriculum, and there's different, uh, strategies and, uh, you know, coping mechanisms, et cetera, that are, that are, um, that are taught. So it's a very broad, um, uh, broad definition.
Okay, that's, that's fine. Thank you. I just wanted, uh, clarification on that. And my other question is, uh, for Dr. Spring, have, um, are all the leave requests in now? And how are we addressing those? Um, are, are, do we have someone in every class?
Teen, teen, where, where are we? Oh, I'm sorry. You went your, okay, so your internet went out a little bit. So if I don't completely answer your question, you can just let me know. So, so we received about 15 leave requests. Some are these, are for childcare leaves related to COVID. Um, you know, arrangements that were impacted by COVID, and that's, uh, on the federal, uh, the FF-CRA, the Emergency Response Act. Um, and then others are just medical accommodations through the American with Disabilities Act. So, uh, we are working on these closely with our, our teachers association and with Scott Charlon. Um, and we've, uh, working with the NICET, uh, their NICET attorney as well as our attorney. So we want to make sure that, you know, obviously we're following the law and we're doing the best we can for each one of our employees. So we are finalizing these each day. We're, we're getting closer. Um, and so the goal is to have those completed this week, um, and we may get more. So, um, and, and if we get more, we will obviously review and we will consider, and we will go through the process. You know, and the only thing is that the closer we get to the school year, the harder it will be to change a schedule or to change teacher assignments.
Is there a deadline that we've given? Um, I understand things come up, believe me, I understand that. But, um, every school district's going to be short teachers. I mean, that's going to be the next, um, hurdle to get over is finding a body for each classroom. I mean, um, do we have, I mean, I know you said you're working with CTA, but, um, what happens if the week before school starts or the week of school, 10 more leave requests come in? I mean, I don't know. Can these just continue to be requested? I don't know how that works.
Yes. So I did, I asked the same question to our, our, our school attorney, and her reply was, Erin Morris, her reply was that yes, we can, we, we must continue to accept these requests and review them. The only challenge is that once our schedule is set, the closer we get to, uh, the first day of the school year, um, it will become very difficult to accommodate some of these requests. So right now, uh, you know, we've been working through the schedule, trying to accommodate the requests. So, so that's an. So we, we did give a soft deadline, so Stacy did remind me. I gave, I gave a soft deadline.
Yeah, I'm sure you did. Okay, thank you.
So Jennifer, the ones that we have already received, we've, we've already taken action on those, right? Like, so either they're, we've given them accommodation, or they're taking leave, or whatever the case is. It's all settled.
And we're working on letters. So that's the thing we're working on, that we're, we're getting out letters. But, but, but we've verbally told people or through email, but they will get an official letter from us. So that's what we're working on right now. I hear a dog. Is that a dog?
I'm sorry, yes, my dog's out there barking.
I'm in my office. It's not me.
Certainly this time, Peg, it's me. Um, but I, I guess I'm, my concern is, you know, that we're going to show up and we're not going to have teachers in classrooms. We're not going to have people, bodies to put in those classrooms, and we haven't posted for anything. If we know that there are people that are on medical leave, we haven't posted for any of those.
So, uh, we, so there was a posting that went out today, I believe, for, for one who is on a leave. But, um, and we're getting that information. So, um, it will be close. There's no question. So we're doing our best to, to be timely with this.
What happens when we have a fourth grade class with no teacher, um, when the students arrive on the first day?
So we have a, a number that we've been able to accommodate in the virtual program. So, uh, so that's been helpful, and we've converted some of our AIS and reading teachers to be able to also, um, help out with a, with a classroom. So Sue, so we are using all hands on deck. We're absolutely using.
Yep, and our, our final, uh, uh, elementary, uh, classroom, uh, decision was, was made today. So we have the teachers for in-person at the elementary classrooms.
Okay, cause the information that I've heard is that we're short three teachers, and we haven't posted anything.
So three.
Elementary, right?
So three in the virtual program. So we're still working on those details.
We were able to accommodate the in, the in-person, um, and looking at schedules, so we did not need to, need to post.
Right. So I think part of it is just.
We have a plan, we have a plan, we have a plan for, um, working through the virtual as well.
Okay, that's good news. That's great news. Um, I just, you know, I think it's, I think it's just people don't know. You know, they haven't been told, you know, what their situation is. Nobody has their assignments yet. You know, kids don't have their schedules. They don't know if they're on blue or gold team. You know, parents don't know what to, to schedule for. Like, I understand that there's a lot that needs to be done. I completely get it. But I feel like we need to at least say, okay, secondary families, you should get a schedule by.
September 1. September 1 is our deadline. I did announce it at our last meeting. Um, so that's the deadline.
So we have 100, 100 and how many people on this meeting? And there's 2,000 people in the school district. I'm just asking if we can communicate to, to people on what their expectations are.
So I did communicate September 1. I'll get that information out again. Um, that they'll, you know, we're finalizing our class assignments right now. They're finalizing the schedule at the high school and, and the middle school. And, uh, I mean, they're, they're going to meet that deadline. They're going to have all that out. I know the high school, they're already stuffing envelopes. Um, so, you know, I, I would say that we're in great shape. We had our counselors come in and, and help the principals, and, and Dan Martinelli's worked overtime, like night and day getting it done, as well as Laura Tarlo. So, so they're, they're in good shape. like night and day getting it done as well as Laura Tarlo. So, so they're, they're in good shape and, and, uh, we're finalizing the elementary as well.
I mean, I have no doubt. I, I have full confidence that our administrators are doing their job. You know, I, it, it's been tough. I have been going through it. Nadia has been going through it. You know, we work in school districts. Uh, you know, I was just simply asking for us to, to communicate with families. This is when you should expect it. That's it. You know, that people are just wondering, when am I going to know when, what team my kid's on? When am I going to know what schedule they're going to have? What am I going to know when their, who their teacher is? There's a lot of just unknowns. And I think, you know, for the teachers as well, you know, they don't know what their, uh, some of them don't even know what their assignments are. Um, you know, so we're in uncharted territory. Sure. And everybody is working hard. Um, but we're kind of getting down to the wire where it is causing a little bit of anxiety. You know, which is clear in that, yesterday. I mean, I, I think that, that was all anxiety and the fact that, you know, you guys were able to work it out. Very appreciative, um, taking the time because this is an unknown and everybody's going through stress and anxiety over it. So.
Yeah, I get it.
Some communication. That's all.
Thank you. We will.
So I totally agree with what Margaret said. Um, people are stressed. We, and I said this to a couple of people today, we are effectively moving the front line from hospitals to the classroom. And it's terrifying for everybody. Um, I don't think, I think that everybody involved has been acting in, in good faith. We, uh, have been transparent and honest and, you know, we don't have all the answers. No one has all the answers. We, we, our, our staff, our, our district leaders are educational experts. And that's where we apply our expertise. And when we don't know the answers, we reach out to people who do know the answers. So I think it's really important that we are totally, you know, honest with our families, our community, our staff, and tell them that we don't know the answers. Our plan wasn't meant to be like in sort of a bargaining chip. It is, uh, uh, an accounting of the tools that we have and what we can do to keep people safe and to do our jobs. And it was meant for them to, to use as a guide to determine if it's safer for them to come back to work or safer for them to bring their kids, send their kids back to school. Uh, it, we're not holding anything back. We, nobody comes to work and says, or comes to a meeting and says, hmm, what can we hide today? We're not doing that. It's all, everything is laid there and we have been living and breathing this all summer, all of us. Thank you so much, the administrators and the teachers, um, and the parents who stuck by and waited through because the guidance changes every single day. Um, and we really are trying and doing the best that we can do. And, and, you know, we're just appreciative. I think the more communication we have, um, I think the, the headline on the web posting today was a little clickbaity and created sort of, uh, uh, you know, a response that wasn't intended. Um, it was a regularly scheduled board meeting and it looked like it appeared at first glance that we called a special meeting to discuss the article in the Times Union, which is not the case. Um, so I think we have to be really mindful of the words that we select when we communicate. But the more we put out in the world, I think the better off all of us are going to be. Parents, again, are still trying to plan what their fall is going to look like, just as much as we're trying to plan what stuff is going to look like. So, you know, any, any efforts we can make to, to communicate more frequently and clearly and in as many modes as possible is appreciated.
Thank you.
So Jennifer, would it be possible, um, FAQ sheet that you have, um, would it be possible for you to post that on Parent Square? It, it, that would be something that they would be able to go back and, and parents could look at and just refer to. If you put it up as a post, it's kind of, you know, Parent Square is kind of looks like Facebook for those of you that don't know. But, so that message stays there and it's something that they could refer back to. Just a thought.
Okay. So I'll talk to Erin. I thought it had gone out through Parent Square. I know it's on our website, um, but I'll, I'll talk to her about that. I spent a whole weekend doing it.
We don't have access, so I don't, I don't know what you have on there. I was just, just to Jeff.
Okay.
Hi, this is Pete. Um, I've got a question about the, um, the emotional, um, and social check-ins that we're doing. Um, my first question is, uh, do we have a plan for doing these in-person with the children that aren't going to be doing in-person tuition? And also are we, have we planned for how many kids we think may need some type of emotional support? They've been off school for a long time. Kids that are going into the middle school or going up into the high school may have needs that, you know, weren't current, weren't there last year because of the prolonged time periods off. So I just wonder, you know, the, uh, the, the, um, social workers, everything involved. And is the board ready for a, probably a greater number of children than would previously have, uh, have happened in the years?
Uh, Peggy, do you want to talk about our, our social emotional supports and plans?
Uh, sure. So, um, even prior to, uh, the end of the school year, our social workers, psychologists, Matt, to, to discuss, um, social emotional supports, to discuss coming back, welcoming plans, meeting students. Um, actually, if in another week, I know we've been doing a lot of surveys. We're sending out a survey to our, our, our families. It's going to be actually early next week just to give them an opportunity, uh, to, uh, let us know if they have, if they have some particular concerns. And we've talked about sending this to older students, older students as well. So with our students who are in the virtual model, I'm at the elementary, they will be with, um, a, a, a teacher each day virtually, but additional supports will be provided as needed. Same thing on the every other day model at the secondary. And then with our, uh, students who are, who are in person, uh, plans are being put into place. I know I was talking to, um, Laura Tarlo today because she had a, a meeting with Ellen Alexu, her, uh, her other, um, and then Angela Tomassini and the psychologist to talk about that. So at all of the buildings, they are talking about, uh, plans and how to check in, how to be, uh, present for all students right in the beginning. Make sure students know, uh, who they are, who they can go to, or additional support. So, uh, and that will be a topic at all of our staff meetings as well. And, and during our opening day professional development to, to ensure that all of those different check-ins are in place.
That's great. Thank you. I also have one more question, if you don't mind, um, about the, um, internet access for the, uh, children that are going to be doing the, uh, either the full virtual or the half days. And also there was a significant number of people came back and said that they didn't have any internet access at home. Are we worried that some people didn't reply to the, um, survey because they didn't have internet access to reply to the survey? And just to confirm for everybody else watching, what, do we have a plan to get these, uh, children access? I know the Spectrum said that they were doing free internet or they were doing a low-cost internet. But people who already don't have a connection may not know that that's available to them.
So that's why we had, uh, phone calls going out today for the, uh, uh, the, uh, parents who hadn't responded to the survey to see if it was that they just missed the survey or weren't able to. So, so far of all of our virtual elementary students, um, uh, there was only, uh, one or two that had any difficulties with the, with the internet. We'll know more about the secondary tomorrow. I think Stacy can speak more to our purchase. I'm not sure when it would come in, but we did, um, we did put in for an order of, uh, order of hotspots. And, uh, we will, we will, we'll work with the, the families in the virtual model. Of course, it becomes broader, uh, if we, you know, if we do have to go totally virtual at, at some point. And that's why we have, um, I know Dr. Spring shared the overall, but we have it down to each family and who the families are and who could potentially need, uh, need internet if, if something, if they're not in the virtual model and, and, and we do need to go fully virtual at some point of the year. So that's why it's important that we work through all of our families and get answers from every family. I do want to also let you know that it's added to our registration form so that any family, uh, who comes in now and has missed the survey, it's part of the registration process. Um, Stacy, do you want to talk to the hotspot order?
Uh, so we did place the hotspot order, um, I think in July. Um, estimated timeframe is probably, uh, end of September, early October. Uh, but we do plan on the installation for the parking lots, for the, uh, remote wireless access in the parking lots to be completed before the start of school. Um, so that's another option for our students as well.
It's great. Thank you.
Sure.
Peggy, I, I have one question. Have meetings been held this summer with the guidance counselors and social workers to address the social emotional issues? Have you, has somebody regularly met with all this group of professionals?
Throughout the, through, uh, you kind of cut off Sue, but did you?
Yeah. Um, well, this has kind of been my thing since, um, we talked about losing those two crucial positions. But have you held meetings or has somebody held meetings with the guidance counselors and social workers this summer on how we're going to address the, uh, social emotional issues? And I feel there are going to be several.
Yeah. And so, so, uh, there's been a lot of scheduling needed to be done this summer with the guidance counselors, doing the hybrid model and the virtual model. And so the, you know, the majority of their, their time in has been, it's been spent working through that. They have been touching base with, with the principals. Um, Rachel Marshall is our administrative intern. She's also doing the, she's a social worker at, um, Harmony Hill. So, uh, we have been, we have been talking about this and we, we will have separate sessions on the September 3rd day where social workers and counselors, um, are meeting. As I mentioned, they did meet right at the end of the year. But in terms of regular summer meetings with the social workers and psychologists, um, we haven't been meeting regularly, but we will be ready because of the plan from the end of the school year and the time spent at the start of the school. I do know that the principals have been touching base. Like I mentioned, Laura had a meeting today. I'm sure Mr. Martinelli has, has, has met, and I know the elementary principals have had conversations. But has it been regularly scheduled throughout the summer? Uh, no.
So the only social worker that's been involved all summer, and perhaps that's because she's interning, is Rachel. No other social workers have been included in any dialogue as far as how we're going to address.
There have been, there was, uh, the social workers met at the end of the school year. And I know there have been conversations at the building level in terms of my involvement, I think you had mentioned, where they're regularly scheduled. No, but I can get more information from Erin. I know that she meets with the social workers and psychologists, but there have been conversations. There have been emails. Principals have been communicating. And that's the focus of the days for the social worker and psychologist. I think this survey will also help us because then the, um, instructional support teams, which include the social worker and psychologist, will be looking at the prior to the start of the school year as well.
So they've all been contacted. That was, I guess, basically my question. There have been, there has been conversation going back and forth with all of our social workers this summer at some point.
At some point, yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Mark, did you have a question? I think you were trying to speak up earlier or did we cover it already?
It was, you, you kind of, it was more budget related, but well, 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 other, the only point I wanted to make was that it, the state kind of blew our, and, and we'll, we'll have to work, not at square one, but we'll have to be talking about ways to, ways to, um, I'm sure we'll, we'll be revisiting this. And there's likely not, we're going to do tonight, but that's, it was, it was budget related.
Any other comments from board members before I, uh, turn over to community questions and comments?
Would like to say thank you. I, this is, just seems like an impossible feat, I, for everybody on internationally, not just in our country, but everywhere. I, I just, I can't, I know how much work you're doing. It's, I don't know how you're doing it all. It's, it's a lot to take on. And nobody has answers. And as our governor said, we don't know what we don't know. And that's really what it's all about. We don't know what we don't know. And thanks for, I know you're working on behalf of our students and families and I thank you for that.
Thank you, Sue. Um, with that, I'll just start with, we had numerous, about, uh, 15 or a little so more questions, comments about, um, returning to school, whether there would be a delay or not based on the conversation around this. Um, because a lot of that is moot now, the conversation and, uh, work that we've done with collaborating. I'm not going to read all of those comments because they're kind of collectively, uh, whole, about the same topic, which was how would the delay impact things and how important, uh, many folks felt that students get back into school sooner rather than later. So, but I do appreciate everyone reaching out with those comments, um, as it greatly helps us whenever we, um, collaborate or work on decisions together. Uh, there was a, and some of these we have covered already, but as far as the UPK program, this question was specifically about whether that would be handled in-person or virtually. And, um, I believe that is in-person as well. I don't know if there's a virtual option for UPK, if folks desire.
There is not a virtual option for UPK? No.
Okay. So all UPK will be in-person? Uh, there was also a question about Chromebooks, which about, uh, they had filled out the form and they hadn't heard and they wanted to know when they would get them. And I believe earlier the date was the 8th through the 10th is when pickup will be for those. There was also a question from, uh, Natasha McCray, which was about having two middle schoolers starting in the fall. And, uh, would it be better to offer honor classes for the virtual only model opposed to denying those selected for honors because the honors class is not offered in the virtual only model? And so, um, we, there's been a lot going on and I don't know that we've touched on specifically any honors-related questions. And, uh, this seems to bring up the fact that, uh, and I don't know if this is accurate or not, so please chime in. But, uh, are honors classes only available to those in, attending in-school instruction?
That, that was not my understanding, but, uh, Peggy and I can follow up on that. I do know in some situations, students, uh, had, there were choices that had to make, but I, I do know every effort was made to, um, accommodate students. So we, we will follow up on that and we'll get back to the parent.
Thank you. Uh, as far as UPK start dates, there were a couple of questions on that, which I believe we've talked about as screening between the 14th and 15th and starting on, uh, 16th. Seems to be what was settled on.
Um, that's correct. And can I clarify something? Because a parent also said that I, I, um, mentioned students who are registered. So just a clarification, if your child was in the three-year-old class last year, yes, they are automatically registered for the four-year-old class. So that includes them. So if they were in the threes last year, um, they do not have to register again. They're included in the four-year-old numbers.
Another question said that the CTA calendar indicates September 2nd as the first superintendent conference day, uh, but the presentation indicated the 3rd. Is that accurate or which one of those is, is correct?
So you didn't come out, come in clearly. So let me look at the, the email. Hold on.
Uh, I'll repeat it and hopefully come in clearly this time, but, uh, it's that the CTA calendar indicates September 2nd as the first superintendent conference day. But, uh, in our presentation, we talked about the 3rd.
Yeah, I thought it was the 3rd. Hold on, I have a calendar here. Uh, it's, I believe it's September 3rd is correct. So, I mean, that's what we've been telling everybody at this point, September 3rd. So.
Can we just do a quick revision of the calendar and out or post it, the, the new, new one, the latest and newest one?
Absolutely. So what I will do is obviously we have to board approve that. Um, and, uh, that will be on our next agenda, but I will also send something out so people are aware of that.
Perfect. Thank you.
Perfect, thank you.
There was also, and, and this was actually a common thread in a lot of the concerns about delaying opening school, but there was a lot of concern about specifically students with IEPs. And one parent just wanted to ask specifically, you know, related to the funding issues, just about what about the needs of special education students? And is she going to be able to get her daughter's 504 reviewed, which didn't happen in the spring? Is she going to be able to get social work, which is in her 504? And, you know, in general, is anyone paying attention to special education students?
So yes, we are paying attention. And I will forward this email to Erin Hill, our Director of Special Programs, to immediately address the mom's issues.
The last comment that I have here is, could we just recap now that we've, there's been a lot of discussions about various things, but just recap the, the dates for in-person return based on elementary, middle and high school?
Yes. So September 11th, Friday, students in the elementary grades of first grade through fifth grade will report for a full day of school, either in-person or in the fully virtual model. All right? Secondary, if you are a student in sixth grade or in ninth grade, you will either report in the morning or in the afternoon, depending on whether you're blue or gold. And your principal will be sending out that information. If you are a student in grade seven, eight, 10, 11, or 12, on that day, September 11th, whether you're in the fully virtual model or in-person, you will be online that day. That will be the asynchronous instruction day, okay? For all those students in that, that, those grade levels. And then Monday, the 14th is a gold day for all of our students and, and at our secondary levels and, and everybody's in, in school, except our kindergarten students will start the 16th. So how did I do? We got it all? So I think so.
I think that was everything. And pre-K will be the same as kindergarten.
Yes, and pre-K will be the 16th as well, thank you.
So Matt, I just noticed there was also a question about BOSEs. I know that we're only pushing the start day off for the secondary visited day or whatever, but there was a question if BOSEs was going to be delayed.
So BOSEs has a start date of September 14th, so it aligns perfectly for, for our students. We are arranging transportation and our students will be going every other day to BOSEs for their in-person instruction.
And those students will be contacted to just let them know? Because that will officially be their first day of school?
Yes.
Right.
Do students who selected the virtual model, do they still have the option to go to BOSEs?
No, BOSEs said no.
Thank you.
That is all the comments that we've received from the public. Are there any other comments from board members, anything else? If not, I'll ask for a, a motion for the consent agenda for this evening.
I'll pass the motion.
I'll second it.
This, um-
Yeah.
Mr. Pascal?
Yes.
Mr. Jackson?
Yes.
Mrs. Dion?
Yes.
Mrs. Carrie?
Yes.
Mr. Annaly?
Yes.
And Mr. Nolan?
Yes.
Thank you.
With that, I did, I did give one other question just now, which was that the person's understanding is that there'll be a five-minute period for drop-off? How will that work with social distancing?
So I, I'm not sure which building this is. But the buildings are, it sounds like obviously it's elementary. So the elementary buildings have different entrances according to grade level. And they also have markers to indicate distances of six feet so that when students line up, they will, they will keep those distances. So Peggy, any, anything else? We will be taking temperatures outside and, and sorting through Parent Square attestations that aren't received. So, so those are part of the logistics. But we do have different teams at different entrances. We'll be great.
And in the, in the letter from the elementary principals with their opening day letter, class assignments, et cetera, it's including all the drop-off procedures, et cetera, social distancing.
Thank you. As far as any other comments or anything, the only thing I wanted to touch on again, Stacy, and hopefully you can correct me or give me a little bit more information. With us approaching it on a quarter-by-quarter basis, we're going to get in to November and they're going to take 20% and we will be out, whatever that amount is at that point, right? So a couple hundred thousand dollars most likely for that quarter.
Yeah, closer to, if there's four quarters, closer to, and that's actually, yeah. It's going to be a real challenge.
So that was kind of, what I was trying to- we'll, we'll, we'll need to do some, some very hard conversations in respect to the services that we had budgeted to provide. And, and when we're, that level of funding, we're not used to doing cuts of this magnitude since the school year started. So we haven't been here before, but, but we are and, and have these, have these very difficult conversations. In, in the meantime, have the opportunity to convey this to our state representatives or the governance office. It is, it is really an inequitable and very disproportionate and unfair way to do this. You just cut a flat percentage because the wealthier districts, that'll, that'll be less cut and they had more money in the first place. So there, there's going to be pain, but this is not a fair way to do it.
Absolutely. Absolutely, Mark.
Okay, yeah. So we're looking at, you know, like a quarter of a million dollars for every quarter that we'll have lost? Is that, am I doing that, Matt, right?
No, a million dollars each quarter.
Oh, that's right, all right, yeah. It's not 20% of the 20%. That would, that would be nice.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
The good news is TRS was $173,000 less than what we budgeted. So that's towards our gap.
Okay, good.
All right, yeah. No, I, I think that approach makes sense. I don't think, you know, we, with, with the position that we're in, we can make additional cuts at this point in anticipation of this. We just, we have to deal with opening school and getting things right for that. But that does mean, you know, we're going to be in the hole starting November.
Correct. So we're going to have to monitor that more frequently. Historically, I used, I would report to the board in December how we're projecting. So I'm going to need to be reporting that more frequently, obviously, to you.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
Any other comment, questions from board members, anything at all? Okay. With that, our, thank you again, everyone who chimed in with questions, comments to the BOA comment email. We, if there's been one positive as part of this, it's been how, you know, transparent I think our conversations have been with everyone involved. And I really appreciate everyone taking the time to reach out with their thoughts. We are here to represent you, so it's, you know, this is what we want to happen, really. So I appreciate again, everyone taking the time for that. Our next set of meetings, there's one, our next is September 9th and following that is on the 23rd. As far as attending for everyone, you out there, it'll be live streamed for you all, but we do hope at that point that we have the equipment and everything we need for the board itself to be together socially distanced.
So we are planning to go back to the middle school library? Does that work for everybody? Socially distanced, it's a large space, we can open the door. We can, you know, work with Sylvie on, on some kind of wide lens or having our laptops in front of us. So, so we'll let you know what the best solution will be.
Yeah, I know.
What's the date for the next meeting? The, the date for the next-
September 9th.
I'm excited about in-person meetings. I'm willing to do whatever we need to do.
Masks.
With that, we, I'll just need a motion to adjourn at 7:40.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
Mrs. Giller?
Yeah.
Mr. Pascal?
Yes.
Mr. Jackson?
Yes.
Mrs. Dion?
Yes.
Mrs. Carrie?
Yes.
Mr. Annaly?
Yes.
And Mr. Nolan?
Yes.
Thank you again, everyone. Hopefully get to enjoy what's left of this wonderful weather that we have.
Thank you.
Everybody, take care.
Thank you.
Bye.